In order back to 403. Please silence your cell phones and stand for the pleasure of the victims.
I pledge allegiance to the republic of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Uh, do I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
I'll make a motion to adopt the agenda.
I'll second it.
Motion made in second, so the favor? Right, okay. Uh, public comment?
Hello? Sandy, is that you?
I'm like.
Hello? Hello?
Are you still there?
Yep, it's Sandy.
Okay. Glad to have you. Okay, hearing no public comment. Department reports. Uh, I have Scott, Dennis', and Daryl's.
Michelle, you got my email?
Huh?
Michelle goes by email.
Okay.
Public works, he was out.
Right.
So, you must let him slide.
Move on down to old business. Uh, Dave Knowles amended the fire protection agreement between the town of Lakeview and Lakeview Rural Fire Protection District. Uh, we went over that, we have a new draft here that everybody needs to please read because we need to sign this draft and get it dated and get it back to, uh, to Dave as well as put for our copy. Um.
Hold on, hold on.
I have a conservative side of the fight, but it is the one that Jeff's done, the same as the one Don's done.
The fire protection agreement?
Where it says draft right across the front of it.
Yeah, didn't you finish one too, the one?
Yeah. I didn't realize Jeff sent.
I didn't.
There's eight pages?
Yep.
Yeah, it should be the same thing. I didn't realize he sent. Yeah, I didn't realize he sent everybody or I wouldn't have doubled up, sorry about that.
He ne- he never said a word to anybody, so. Okay, um, the Nony Vandenberg color run has been canceled. Okay, uh, we move on down, well, we've got the, move on down to the transit lodging tax application, Lake County Fairgrounds. Okay. I'm with, Michelle?
Hi, Shelley.
But you're muted. I don't know.
Hey Shelley, you're muted. Just say hello.
Okay.
Too much dinner on you, you have a good day.
I think Michelle just got on.
Okay, um, Scott, you and Michelle went over this with, you explain this a little bit?
Um, yeah, I can't. I wish I had it in front of me, but I don't.
I'll just get it to you. Did you find it? Okay.
I didn't, I gotta find your application.
Should be.
I have it master plan. Show Ryan.
Yes. Again.
I talked to several people with travel organ on this because it borderlines a very gray area as we talked about before with lodging tax and it really doesn't qualify for lodging tax. If, um, okay, if you resubmitted it for advertising and moved some dollars around, we'd probably make it work. But as for a master plan thing, they don't allow us to spend that on lodging taxes, what they're telling us.
Okay.
And I've been trying to get the information back over here, but for COVID-19, they only have about a third of their staff in their office and they laid a budget block. So what I was hoping to have was something to show you what they're telling us and breaking it out and what they're telling us when we help you come here around to where we can give you more.
Okay, so is there a separate form for that?
Uh, you'd have to resubmit for the grant.
Same form?
Same form.
So the same form I've been using since November, right?
Yeah, but not, not then updated your master plan.
Okay.
You need to get creative.
Right.
Um, kind of reiterate my, what I'm saying. You need to get creative and come back with more of a, uh, tourism, your tourism related type grant that you're going after.
Now you have what, your gun shows or rock shows out there?
Yeah.
Um, what else more goes on out there than bringing in the tourism?
Okay, just a second.
Oh, I was so annoyed, sorry.
Oh, so all the weddings, censuries, graduations, um, lot of memorials. Um, but there's all kinds of activities.
You've got Fourth of July.
Yeah. Fourth of July.
Right, right. See, stuff like that, that brings people, physically brings people.
Well, that's all mentioned in this.
Right, but your, your ask is for the master plan.
Okay.
And if we do that and we get audited, we'll get in trouble.
Okay.
Because that's more of an infrastructure type thing than it is a tourism advertising type thing.
So just throwing it out there as an example. If I went in for advertising, give me a scenario that how that would look without just like lying. I mean, I mean seriously.
Well, I don't know what your budget is for advertising like the fair.
Oh, very small.
You know, you're gonna have to look at that and figure out what you can move around and say, okay, what I normally spend X amount of dollars on to advertise the fair.
Right.
If I get a grant for that, I can take that money and put it towards, you know, I can get what I normally use for advertising, I can move that over to the master plan and use your grant for my advertising.
Right, okay.
See, see what I'm saying? Just moving dollars around is what it is.
Okay.
And it's not really lying, it's just changing.
Changes the format of your business.
Yeah.
And, and, and that's what it comes down to because if we get audited, we've got to show that that money was used for advertising, for bringing people in.
Okay.
And this does, but it's a long-term infrastructure plan and they don't allow us. And that's the problem we have with Little League, when Little League came to us and was wanting money to upgrade the fields and everything. We could advertise.
How's the concert fit into advertising?
Because they ad- they advertise the concert and it brings people in from that forum. So, and, and we're not paying for the whole concert.
Right.
A part of it and what they're, they're doing the same thing, the money that they usually use for advertising has been moved over to securing artists.
Right.
And then our money has been used for advertising. It's pretty much the same thing as the.
If I may, counsel later. I think some of that advertisement will also work for like the banners that you guys put up for him when it's across, so you guys post for Lake County Fair and Roundup across the highway and stuff?
No.
You guys do not?
We don't, no.
Okay, you don't?
That's a roundup.
That's right.
Okay, so, or for where you advertise in the newsprint, you guys also advertising Klamath?
Right.
So you advertise in other cities, so those would also count and they're a little more expensive and.
Actually, Klamath was cheaper than here.
Sorry.
I know, very funny, but okay.
You understand we're a triangle.
I see, okay.
And it comes down to just, we've got to
Right.
watch what we do because we will get audited.
Oh, now I get that.
If we're not doing it right, we'll lose that lodging tax and that's the last thing we want.
Yeah, I get that.
And I, I talked to several different people and, you know, the recommendation was fairgrounds are tough.
Right.
You can't do any infrastructure, what we can do advertising and that type of thing.
Okay. Okay, I get that. Good.
So that's, that's who we are with that.
Okay. I'll mention the application. Okay. I'll get it in mind. Okay.
Next one is town of Lakeview lodging tax grant, Lakeview Elks Lodge. Another one. Go ahead.
Do I get this one too?
Yeah. I don't see Michelle up there anymore.
I don't think she has her camera on. And they may have called then.
Yeah, we're here, uh, my camera is just not working, sorry.
Okay.
I've heard Jeff and Jeff, Jeff.
Yes, clear. So on the one for the Elks Lodge, as we talked there and Michelle, that one also does not fit the criteria. They're,
That's correct.
They're trying to call themselves a city center, but they've never been recognized as a civic center there and holding the name Elks Lodge on the building and as Elks Lodge, they are considered a private members-only club. So that, that also is another one I talked to, talked about when I was in Canyon Valley at seminar and that's a big no. We'd be getting a lot of trouble for that one. If that building was set aside as a civic center and just an event center, totally different story. But the Elks Lodge also will have to be denied at this time because they're a private club, private.
So Jeff Heblin, if I may, do I need a vote for those two?
Yeah, I would do them separately, there should be a motion to deny.
Okay.
And then.
So I do need a motion?
And then, yes.
Okay.
But it should be done separately, each one should be done separately.
Okay, so let's do the fairgrounds first.
Okay, so we need a motion on the tax, lodging tax grant application for the Lake County Fairgrounds.
I make a motion that we deny the tax, or the lodging tax grant for the fairgrounds under, um, and not qualifying meeting criteria.
Still there, Nikki? Sandy?
I'm sorry, sorry. I, I won't know when to deny the, uh, fairgrounds, the program application for, uh, fund.
She denied the fairgrounds application.
Okay.
So is that, sorry, um, Sandy, please put that in terms of a second because we haven't gotten the vote yet.
I'll play you the call.
We did have.
But they need a second.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, I'm used to now, okay, uh, I'll set the.
Okay, motion made in second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Nikki?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carried. Uh, on the Elks Lodge, uh, lodging tax grant, I need a motion on that, deny that one as well.
I'll make a motion that we deny the lodging tax grant. For the Elks Lodge, you begin to deny the criteria.
Do I have a second?
Okay, Sandy, second too.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all.
All right, motion carried, we'll move on down to new business, people. Okay, new business. Um, Lakeview High School seniors Hannah and Zoe Suba regarding 52 grad senior pictures on town of Lakeview light pole on North F, North and South F and North Fourth Street.
It runs part of Fourth Street down to like, I think, isn't it the gas station?
You guys must went around County Light Pole, huh? Um, do I have a motion on this to allow them to put those pictures up?
Do you want them to, they brought.
I make a motion to.
Wait, wait, let's make them do their presentation.
I say, wow. They wrote a presentation for you guys, so.
Come on up here and do your presentation.
Don, where do you want to sit?
I need you to drop the guns.
And you're all, well, you got it.
Oh, okay.
Wait, it's Hannah and Zoe, I think?
Hannah and Zoe Suba and Carmelina. The town manager is saying hi girls, hi.
Isn't this fun?
Hi.
Okay, so my name is Carmelina Arredondo.
I'm Hannah Suba.
I'm Zoe Suba. And we're seniors at Lakeview High School, um, I am an A, the ASB Vice President.
I'm the Class Vice President.
And I'm the Class Secretary. So we're here to present, um, an issue because of the COVID-19, um, something that I do for my school is I help create fundraisers, um, for my class to raise money for trips and projects. Um, due to COVID, we have extra money that will be spent on the original use, um. We have talked with vendors about creating posters of each senior to hang on the poles on Main Street. Um, he has worked hard and will be putting in a lot of time to create these posters and they will be in front and back with a senior on each side. There will be a total of 26 banners, but 52 seniors. The banners will be able to be removed and given to each senior when they are done being hung up. They, they will be 30 inches wide and 38 inches long. These posters were smaller than the Lakeview rather posters we usually hang up. We're needing a couple figures from the town and that would be, would you guys be willing to hang the post, the banners for us? And while hanging them, would you guys be able to move the brackets down? And the reason for this is, um, so that when we hang the posters, they'll be visible to people passing by.
I'm not too sure the brackets are movable.
That's a big question for Jeff Marshall.
Yeah.
Jeff Marshall answered, they are movable.
Okay.
Yeah. Is that something you'd be able to do, Jeff? Do so and, and we'll put the posters up for you and, uh, one of you can give a thought and supervise for the distance if you like.
Okay.
Okay.
And we made it okay with our advisor, so she sent out a Google form for every parent of the seniors. So they would be able to electronically sign, giving them permission to have their name and photo up around town, so. And then we also have an example here of how they would look so that you guys kind of know what's going up. So this is the idea that vendors originally had, um, there was a hiccup in the school and the only thing changing on this would be that the class of 2020 would just say senior on it. I'm not sure for the reasoning, I'm assuming legal things and stuff like that. So then, this would be like the front side and then this would be the opposite side of it. Um, and the reason why we want to put on Main Street is because that's kind of the only place people are driving at the moment due to everything going on. And so we decided to put them together so we could just use the poles on Main Street and not swing around on F and stuff like that. And so we also want to talk to vendors about, um, on here it's yellow and black, but I feel like he can be flexible. We still have to talk to them about maybe changing the black to like a navy blue like school colors. And so we still have to talk to them and if you want to see like, uh, like an example of how big it is, um, Carmelina's picture is hung up at, um, 12 pound. So if you want to see an example of what that would look like. Okay.
Cool. Does anybody have any questions for these girls? Okay, hearing none. Now we'll go back and I need a motion. Give these girls permission to paint these.
To approve sending of the 2020 senior pictures on the town light pole.
I'll second it.
Motion made in second, so in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, girls.
Thank you.
Yes.
So when do you think you guys are gonna have it from vendors?
When you get those made, get a hold of, stop right down home, get a hold of Jeff.
Okay.
Okay.
When do you think that might be?
Set up a time and everything.
We still are trying to get pictures because they have to be pictures approved by the parents.
Oh, yeah.
And so we're trying to, yeah, figure that out, but after they order, it should be like eight to 10 days that he starts making them.
Okay, next on the new business is the informational, the town budget publication has been in the paper.
I think I gave everybody a copy of that.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, let's move on down to resolution 977, Big Pool Grant. I need a motion on this one. Putting in for a big grant for a swim pool.
Hold on, let me get there.
For 977?
Uh, yeah, first, does it require a state of emergency?
Oh, okay.
Yeah, that's a good one.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, is it Hannah in the red or Zoe in the red?
Zoe's in the red, yeah, thank you.
Um, and I assume that we have kind of analyzed the ability to match this grant. Is that correct, Michelle?
That's correct. And it's, it's, um, it's not a match, it's, um, there's a 750,000 large grant. Um, the second, the smaller grant is for 75,000 and there is a 10% match on that.
Michelle.
Okay, this doesn't match you fine.
Michelle, on the big grant, that what they're talking about in the management phase after we facility operational for a period of time, is that correct?
That, that's correct.
So Nikki, what they're talking about at the large one and I'm familiar with these grants, since we did partially what we did when we did the the service plugs, is we have to re- keep tour operations, you don't keep an operation using five or 10 years, or sometimes 15 or 20, then the money is a tax, which is a forgivable loan basically with the understanding you have to be operational. And I think that's the plan.
That, that's correct.
Yeah. I just, it says in here separately, matching funds to fulfill its share and then in a separate line following it, it says adequate funding for onboarding, I'm just wondering if that shouldn't say, instead of matching funds, necessary funds or something a little more ambiguous.
Okay. Wait, I can take that out and, um, I, I was, it, it was just a sample. Um, and so I, it, it does now read kind of confusing, so I can remove that, yes.
So if you guys.
Yeah, go ahead.
If you guys.
I wanted to go on.
Right.
Right, so if you guys wanted to improve tonight, what you can do is say, um, as amended with the stricken of the local matching funds, whereas for the, for that person, and let us that, so if you want to, you guys cite the motion tonight on it, and obviously it's a choice, you'd be able to approve resolution number 977 with the amendment of the removal of the, whereas the local matching fund section of it and then let's prove that first, and I'll decide.
Okay, so now do I have a motion on this?
Making a motion to approve resolution number 977. And I would, I would say with the correction of the fifth line that says whereas the town of Lakeview has available or local, instead of matching, necessary funds to fulfill its share of obligation related to the grant application, should the grant fund be liberated.
Okay. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Motion's made in second, so in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, now.
Thank you.
Let's move on down to 978. This one here is, uh, the McDonald Park Kitty Bowl Grant.
And I would make the same motion on that, resolution 978 with the correction of.
Yes.
I'm asking that this one does require a match, Nikki, does it?
Okay.
There is.
Okay, then we're fine on that one.
970, $100.
Yeah, I, it does have that, um, and what I can say is that I, I can find the matching funds on this since it's a little amount. And the district here down at McDonald Park needs some immediate attention, so whether we, uh, you know, give the $7,500 to match, we're gonna need to have some money go down there, uh, the shed is, is the roof falling in and the electrical boxes are like 5,000 years old, not really been repaired.
Yeah.
They're getting, it's a safety hazard, so, uh, it's one way or the other, we need to do something to secure our lives.
Yeah, I, I agree a hundred percent, so as long as we, you know, that one action fine, we'll just say that, so all through, or make a motion to approve resolution 978.
I'll second it.
Motion's made in second, so in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
I appreciate you reaching out to the grants, Michelle, because there's something that we really wanted to apply for for some time, so I appreciate that.
Thank you so very much, well, I've got a couple floor on the tail. Um, the one I'm just finishing up for AARP, doesn't require any resolutions, but I am requesting $150,000 to wall and improve some more down at McDonald Park and fix up the play equipment so it's not a hazard to kids and put in some additional ventures and, so that's, I'm submitting that tomorrow.
That's fantastic.
Okay. Let's move on down, uh, Ronnie Lindsay is here, Lake County Fairgrounds, Fourth of July uh, fund asking for a donation of $1,000 for the fireworks show. I believe that's in our budget, am I correct?
That's correct.
So I need, need a motion on donating a thousand dollars to the fireworks fund.
I make a motion that we donate a thousand dollars to the fireworks fund.
Do I have a second?
Who seconded?
Sandy.
Thank you.
Motion's made.
Thank you for your time, Sandy.
The seconded twice.
Oh, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Oh, this is getting more fun. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Ms. Ronnie.
This would be every meeting.
Next on the list, um, Ginger Castro's LTP update, Ginger?
Let me go scan.
Nikki, do you and Sandy want me to go scan this information she brought really quick?
Sure.
Yeah. Nope, I can go scan it.
Good afternoon, everybody. It may sound a little muffled because I've got my mask on. So, if you can't hear me or you got, you know, you want me to repeat, just let me know. I say raise your hand, but I can't see any of you.
I can actually hear you pretty good.
Oh, good, oh, good. So this is the end of the first quarter for, um, the TLT grant that you gave, you know, that you, um, awarded the uh, Lakeview Community Partnership, so this is my first report. And, um, you approved this, um, application that we made in November, November 20th of 2019. But the position didn't actually begin until the first part of February and, um, so we are a couple of months behind, um, in, you know, in terms of the, the year along, the year that we have because it expires in November of this year, November 20th of this year, so I just wanted to bring that up. So this report just reflects work from, uh, February 10th through the end of the quarter, which was March 31st. So we are now well into, uh, the second quarter. But I, I split this up into, um, different segments of what work Lakeview Community Partnership is doing and the first one that I reported on is the Downtown Partners Group that we, um, put together last October. And, um, that group, I mean, I think most of you know something about it and many of you as council members have attended our meetings and where we are with that process right now, if you need for me to start at the beginning, I would be happy to do that, but I think everybody's pretty up to speed about why we are doing it and where we're trying to go with it. Um, I included in the packet, um, that Don will send to you, a reminder of the summary. Um, I included in the packet, um, that Dawn will send to you, a reminder of the summary from, uh, the, the visiting, visioning process that started and kicked this all off in October. And Sherry Stewart from Oregon Main Street was the person who came and worked with us along with Katie Jamison. He was with Ford Family Foundation. And the document you're getting at is only two pages long. And it's just a reiteration or a summary of the overarching goals and priority activities that the group has been, um, looking at and talking about. So obviously, we got, um, we kind of got sidelined in early March. Our intention, uh, was, and we did have an ad hoc committee that worked to put together a, um, scope of work, a request for a scope of work from consultants about planning for the overarching goals and activities. But even beyond that, to go into looking at plan for streetscapes and, um, other programs that might be helpful in our downtown. And we have some ideas about generally what those things are, but we don't have specific, um, timelines. We don't have specific programs in mind yet because we need to have someone, uh, that's an expert in these sorts of things and have some economic development background to come in and work with us. And the Ford Family Foundation is one of the resources to assist us with bringing in those consultants. So a request for three consultants went out to three consultants, um, was issued in February with a deadline of March 31st. And because of the COVID-19 crisis, and their work kind of going, kind of going sideways and obviously ours, we extended that until, um, uh, the end of April and then again till, until next week. So we should have something from at least two of them. One of them may not be submitted, but that's okay. We'll at least have two. And our idea was to begin, uh, the planning work in May, June. And we aren't sure how that's going to fall out. It's going to depend on the timelines and the scopes of work that we get from the consultants. There is quite a bit of work that we can do online and through Zoom and platforms like that. Um, there's nothing that can replace the face-to-face, of course, but we can at least get started and, um, begin to regain some momentum. So I'm happy about that. And both of the consultants that, um, I believe are going to submit are very, um, excited about submitting and very excited about trying to get going with us. So does anybody have any questions about that? Okay. If not, I'm going to move on. So the Alger Theater, um, programming and renovation, fundraising, and planning, obviously that also got sidelined. Our last movie or our last event there was on March 7th. And, um, we closed the theater very shortly after that. And we will, um, open as soon as we get, um, direction, guidance, um, from the, uh, Public Health and from the governor's office about how that's going to happen. We have not, we do not have a plan about that because we sort of felt like, we just want to wait and see what it's going to look like. We have some scenarios in mind. I don't think, um, it's going to be too onerous for us to abide by whatever comes out, and we certainly will. So in the meantime, I wrote a grant, um, for the theater to the Oregon Historic, um, well, it was called the Oregon Historic Theater Grant, and it was put out by the Oregon Historic Preservation Department. They received a fairly large grant from the federal national, um, historic theater, uh, federal program. And this grant is to assist those that are successful with their application and becoming, um, a historic, national historic, um, building, along with, um, doing some upgrades or some renovation work. So if we are successful with this, we've written a grant for $77,000 and some change to do four things at the theater. And those things are replacing the fire doors and the, at the rear exits of the building and developing a drainage system at the back of the building that will go carry water that, that builds up back there out to the street and causes us some heartburn with our back wall in the basement and seeping under the fire doors and all that. So that whole, that, all of the, the whole fire door thing is going to be completely, um, uh, replaced and, and shored up. And, uh, the second thing is to, uh, uh, renovate the ridding system, um, in the ceiling behind the screen and get a new, um, fire retardant curtain to replace the original curtains. The curtains that are there are the ones that were hung in 1940. They're 80 years old this year. So, uh, replacement there, a lot of work up in the catalog area, a new motor to run the, the, um, curtains and also, um, a new tracking system for them because that is all shot. Everything, whenever we have to do anything with the curtains, we have to do it by hand and we're all really paranoid about it all coming down on a Sunday. So that's, well, another thing, um, we're also repairing all the brick on the outside, repainting brick where there is solid brick, rest, uh, restoring and repairing the ceramic brick on the back of the building, the alleyway that's been broken out over the years from vandalism or, or whatever. So, um, remortaring in places. We actually have one place up at the very top of the building in the very back behind where the screen is, where you can see blue sky through the wall. So we're, we're pretty, um, excited about the possibility of getting that fixed. And the fourth thing is to have all of the lighting on the interior, and I'm talking about light bulbs only, and electrical receptacles that are no longer working or out of date, and we don't even have light bulbs that fit them anymore. Having all of the light bulbs, um, that we can replace with LED on the inside, um, replaced. And some of them that are on a reasstep will remain, um, indescent because reassets don't work well with LED yet. They're working on, or not with our system or what we'll have to work with. So those are the four things. It's amazing to me that those four things come up to a price tag of $77,000, but that's the way it is. There was a 20% match and, um, at LCP in our Alger renovation fund, we do have the 14,000 to, um, or almost 15,000 to match it. So we will know about the grant in June, and we can begin this work in July and will, it'll, um, we, we have two years to complete it. So that took a lot of my time because not only was it about, I mean, it's really amazing just on those things that, that we have to, uh, I feel like a general contractor, uh, what we have to learn and know about. But it was also the application to become a historic theater, and that is incredibly complicated. So I spent most of the month of March and early April working on that. Um, we are planning, well, I'll go into that later. Um, we had a lot of cancellations. We had a Rico Nova concert that we had to cancel. There were several movies we had to cancel. Uh, there's a lot of planning that was midstream that I won't even go into, that we just have put on hold, um, until fall or until we know, you know, that we can reliably go into it. Uh, one of them is the Cowboy Poetry. I did spend about three, four days in Elkhorn at the beginning of February at the Cowboy Poetry Gathering there, the national one. And that was 15,000 people. That was pretty amazing. And I am working with Travel Southern Oregon, um, about developing a cowboy poetry event here. Of course, it is not going to be that big, or, um, we're going to start small, but we plan on using the theater as the center of that, and we're going to be using other venues around town to incorporate balladeers and poetry and, um, gear, um, and, uh, other, uh, events that would go along with it. But the first time out is going to be a small event, and we're going to build from there. And we are working with Billy Flip on that. She's on board. And we've got several artists that are already working with us about it. So we were kind of midstream when, when we got shut down. Um, and then, of course, along came COVID. That sort of interrupted a lot of what we were doing, um, and what we were planning on. So, uh, we very quickly, uh, partnered with, uh, the Lakeview, or excuse me, the Lake County, uh, Chamber of Commerce to triage the businesses and the issues that were mostly evident when the shutdown started. And it came in waves. It was pretty intense the first two and a half weeks, and it took a lot of our time. Um, and my time was mostly spent researching, um, all the different grants and, uh, the PPP and the IDOL and all those things so that we could actually be helpful to the businesses. And we sort of split it up between Maria and, um, uh, Jessica and I so that we could really respond responsibly to them. We, uh, we turned the LCP cell phone into a hotline, which was ringing off the wall for the first couple of weeks and still, still is. And we also, um, had the, uh, senior center ask if they could, uh, direct their seniors to our phone if they needed any information about businesses or delivery of food or supplies or anything like that. So we did do that for a while and, um, had quite a few people that really took advantage of that. Um, we don't know what we have in front of us. None of us really does. And we know that we're going to be continuing to offer support to the businesses. And our roles have really been defined that, um, the, the chamber is working with marketing issues and helping businesses with, um, how to be inventive and think outside the box. And we've had a lot of discussions with, um, individual, uh, businesses about that. And there's been some really successful, um, thinking outside the box with some of them, which has been extremely helpful to them. And we've learned a lot in the process, too. So they really took the lead on the marketing and the communication. And LCP's role, or my role, is really to be the background, uh, person who was working with, um, the SBDC over in Klamath to bring information, um, and along with the chamber, too, that to try to clarify. Because there for a while, there was so much information coming out. We were trying to figure out what was reliable and what was the truth and what wasn't. We pretty much got that figured out. And so now a lot of my time is spent on Zoom meetings with the Regional Solutions Team and, um, Oregon Main Street. All of those have, um, uh, webinars and, and Zoom meetings on a weekly basis, sometimes more than that to keep us up to date. And today, the governor's drafts on guidelines for reopening are rolling out all afternoon. They've been coming out. And so we know, um, when we have a call on Thursday, that, um, we're going to have more, more information about how this is going to really look. And we'll be definitely, and we think we're going to have an uptick at the end in, in helping our businesses understand how they're going to be able to open and what the guidelines are going to be. So, um, we know that we need to continue working together. We know we need to continue working with Travel Oregon. Travel Oregon is taking a tremendous hit, um, with their staff, uh, in Portland and in Salem. It, um, is going to affect us dramatically here with our tourism. Uh, we don't know yet, but we're going to just keep rolling along. Uh, the Brownfields Project keeps moving forward. Right now, we have, um, Phase One and Phase Two projects at the two KBE buildings that are right adjacent to the Alger Theater. Tall Town Bike and Camp is just in the process of starting the Phase One process. And then, of course, Don's Market. And what I would recommend about, um, the Brownfield Projects and the conversations about that is that we push that conversation possibly into a work session so that we can get a little deeper into it, um, according to how you folks want to go, especially with Don's Market. And we can get the, um, lead engineer, Cardno, um, the environmental engineering firm you've been using, get Keith Sebran on the phone also. So that's my recommendation about that. Um, in the second quarter, which is, we're already a month into that, um, is this, if we're Downtown Partners, is to select our consultants by day 15, um, start the resource development for the work that's identified and identify our, um, who is going to help us pay for this. And that, of course, would be Ford Family Foundation who is still interested despite everything that has been going on. But we'll find out for sure. And we're going to try to commence work at least by, um, July 15th, um, in whatever manner is going to be appropriate by that time, whether it's going to be in person or it's going to be a Zoom meeting. And then Alger Theater, we've got a couple more grants coming up for, um, renovation. That's pretty much our primary focus at this point, besides the programming. And, um, and then, of course, reopening and, and putting our mind to what that's going to look like and how or if we can do concerts, if we can bring Rico Nova back. Um, that was a sponsored concert by Obsidian Renewables. So we certainly want to honor that, um, that concert and their investment in it. And then, of course, the Cowboy Poetry Event, which we don't know, we're hoping it can, it can happen in the fall. But we're going to be okay if it has to go over into 2021. We just know we're going to do it. We are committed to doing that. And then, uh, the scope of work for the engineering, um, portion of the renovation so that we know what we're doing structurally. And then we'll continue with the COVID response. I sort of talked a little bit about that. Um, we are talking about, um, the possibility of a recovery plan for those, uh, working with those, uh, businesses that really feel like they need it in conjunction with the Small Business Development Center with KCC over in Klamath. And then, uh, the Brownfields Project is just to continue on. We are getting towards the end of the Brownfields Project. It's not, uh, let's see, date-wise, it goes until September of 21. But we have done a lot of work in a short period of time. And what we're trying to do is get all the on-the-ground work completed, um, this year so that we can start going back and looking at what planning processes we need to help the owners of the buildings with for development of the properties or the folks that are in the process of being interested in purchasing those properties. And we do have some people that are interested, so that's good. So that's all of my report. I did include, like I said, the, the two pager on, um, the overarching goals and priority activities, which may get changed now with COVID. And then there is a transaction detail of the expenditures of the grant due date as of March 31st. So there you have it.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Do you have time to talk to them?
Okay. Well, we will move on to, uh, Resolution 981, the State of Emergency. We need to extend that out another month. We're going to take this month by month till this is pretty well over, over with. So I need a motion on the four to extend the, uh, local State of Emergency.
I'll make a motion to extend, uh, the local State of Emergency for another thirty days.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Motion's made in seconds. Open favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye.
Okay. Um, move on down. The budget process will remain online at the town's Facebook page. Michelle, do you have anything to add to that?
Uh, no. Maybe why it's going on Facebook is so that, uh, the public can comment live. It's the only platform where I know that can take live question. I, uh, GoToMeeting can, but it's not a lot of people, um, that, it's just easier for people to know Facebook, like your own page. And we will be taking questions live. And we will also be taking questions by email, or people can drop questions off here at town.
Okay.
Is that something that we, that budget meeting, we can hold somewhere where we can be in the room together?
No.
Is it on stage?
We can. Um, we're limited to 10 people. Um, yeah. So it will be held in the council room and streamed live from there. Um, so there's just going to be a lot of coordinating efforts.
So.
I'm sure that we accommodate the public mostly.
Can we do that where like, uh, like if maybe if they are present, I think that's under 10 people, including yourself? Okay. Uh, I just want the public. And I would, that one, I think would be a little bit harder to reach, not violating.
Okay, uh, I just go for the public, and I would, that one I think would be a little bit harder, we need to not continually please, or here as well, uh, like, on stage.
Uh, I'm, I'm, I'm sending out budget packages tomorrow, and so people, and I've been sort of announcing that for, uh, Facebook and everything, you know, where people, if they are interested, they're receiving a copy of the budget report, that they can, um, request one, and we will send it to them. It's also gonna be on our website, and we'll post it on Facebook as well, so that you can download it and to go there.
Yeah, perfect, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. All right, we have two more resolutions here. One is resolution nine seventy-nine, the matter of terminating compensation to town engineer for assisting the new town manager. Do you have a motion on that?
I'll make, I'll make a motion that we pass resolution nine seventy-nine as written.
Do you have a second?
What was the motion? I forgot, 'cause I'm not seeing, oh, there it is, okay.
Who made, who made the motion?
Scott did.
Okay, so terminating the, um, compensation, okay, I see it now. I'll second that, okay.
Motion's made in seconds, open favor.
Aye.
All aye.
Okay. The next one is resolution nine eighty, in the matter of terminating compensation for public works assisting new town manager.
I'll make a motion that we, uh, pass resolution nine eighty as written.
I'll second.
Motion's made in seconds, open favor.
Aye.
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 Okay. All right, does anybody have anything else? Okay, um, if I'm not mistaken, we do have an executive session?
That is correct.
Okay.
You guys have Michelle.
Okay, so we will return, adjourn and regular meeting at four fifty-five.